Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the April 11th, 2023 regular meeting and work session later of the Pinehurst Village Council. Having called the meeting to order, I need to identify some logistical changes from our usual pattern, and that involves two of our council members. A few days ago, Councilmember Morgan indicated that he, for personal reasons, would need to be absent from Pinehurst today, however, able to participate in the meeting. And those of you here in Village Hall can see Jeff's photograph, I think, on the screen.
Recording in progress.
His photograph on the screen, and Jeff, I think you can hear us. Welcome to the meeting.
I hear you fine, John. I assume you can hear me also.
Yes, we can. Thank you, and we'll be mindful during the time of our discussions to make sure you're getting any comments in that you want. I'll be looking for your picture there. Secondly, this morning, Councilmember Bosch indicated that she is ill and unable to attend this meeting today, so I will move that the council make the absence of Councilmember Bosch an excused absence due to illness, and I will make that motion now. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of that? That's a motion by Pat Pizzella. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Jane Hogeman, sorry. All in favor of the motion to make this an excused absence for Councilmember Bosch? Please say aye.
Aye.
Jeff? All right, thank you very much. Having moved and made you aware of those logistical changes, there are several members of the council present today, Councilmember Pizzella on my left, your right, Councilmember Hogeman on my right, your left, Jeff Sanborn, various members of the village staff, village clerk, and several attendees at this meeting. If you're listening to this meeting on live stream and you wish to make a comment to the village council under our comments section, please send an email to the village clerk, and she will distribute that message to council and appropriate staff at a later time. If you're here in Village Hall and wish to speak to the council under comments at the end of our regular meeting, there is a sign-up sheet in the rear of the room. Shortly before we get to that part of the agenda, the village clerk will retrieve that sign-up list and give it to me, and I'll call upon those of you who have signed up to speak at that time. Jeff, I believe that that covers all the early logistical information we need to report today, and we'll move into item number two on our agenda, which is reports from the village's manager and the council, and I'll start with Jeff Sanborn.
All right, thank you, John. Two things I'd like to comment on. The first is that John and I had the opportunity to meet with leaders from the municipalities, other municipalities in Southern Moore County, and Moore County leadership, and leadership from the North Carolina Department of Transportation again this afternoon to further our conversations about how to stand up the required metropolitan planning organization that has resulted from the fact that we now meet a census threshold of 50,000 people within a defined geographical area. There were some new faces at the table, and I think as a result of that, we didn't make a lot of progress in our conversations, but conversations went well. There seemed to be, we talked about financing available, we talked about the procedural requirements ahead of us to stand up the organization, and we talked about options for defining a geographical footprint that would be under the planning auspices of this new organization, and we talked about the idea that one of our local government organizations here in Moore County would need to be coming to the table to be identified as the lead planning organization. There seemed to be maybe some consensus building among the folks that were in attendance today around the idea of keeping that geographical footprint kind of smaller, if you will, kind of confined to Southern Moore County, where the population is most dense, though no decisions have been made on that, and I don't know that there was really any other thing of note to come of the meeting that John may want to address that now or later in his comments.
I think the only other thing, Jeff, where there is a confirmation of some of the funding activity that will come as a part of the MPO to help cover the costs of that, and that, as Jeff's been pointing out to us for some time, it's, this is a process we need to keep moving along with, so in fact, the next meeting of this group will be on May the 1st, and we'll, at that point, I think, be making even more progress on the map and how that footprint works. Anything else?
No, thank you, John. Appreciate that input as well. The other thing I'd like to comment on, this is for the public's benefit, is that we are experiencing some problems with credit card transactions here in Village Hall, over in our Parks and Recreation Department, the community center, and in the library, and this is, it's a vendor problem. They're working through some sort of a glitch that they're going to have to roll out some new software patches for, and we expect that they're going to get that fixed by Friday. We're hopeful that that will come to pass. In the meantime, for members of the public that want to, need to come in and do those types of transactions with us in those three facilities, we'd ask you to bring cash or a check, and we can continue to process those things. We just can't handle a credit card until that glitch is fixed. And that concludes my report. Thanks.
Jeff, thank you very much. Now we'll move to council reports, which is a chance for members of the council to report to the staff and other council members and the public on the committees and commissions of the village to which we are each assigned, and I have no update reports for this meeting, so I'll move directly to Jeff Morgan. Would you have any reports for the council, Jeff?
No specific reports, John, but I will just say thank you to the staff, specifically Jason Whitaker and his team, for being able to coordinate this and do the link up to allow me to be ready to be here, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we got very used to this during COVID, and it's a technology we'll be using again, I'm sure, so happy you're right there, Jeff. Jane Hogeman, any reports?
Yes, thank you. I attended the beautification committee's meeting on April 3rd. Pat Pizzella was there, too. They had a presentation from Jan Hiltner, who is on the Board of Trustees of the Sandhills Horticultural Society, which runs the Sandhills Community College Gardens, you may be familiar with, about their lecture series that they present and various events, and interest was expressed in partnering between the Horticultural Society and the Beautification Committee at the village in co-sponsoring some lectures on the Sandhills ecosystem, possibly to take place here at the village, which sounds exciting. Second of all, beautification work is proceeding in the village. The new downtown plantings are going in in accordance with the McAdams Plan, and the village is also looking at the possibility of some street planters to enhance Market Square. In addition, we have received grant money for commercial appearance and approvals from the railroad and the DOT to repaint the railroad trestle, which is a big deal. This is something that we've been trying to get done for quite some time, and it looks like this may now come to pass, which is wonderful, and congratulations are due to Jeff Batten for helping pull all that together. And interestingly enough, apparently, this year is the 100th anniversary of the building of the railroad trestle, so it's all coming together. And thirdly, the Beautifications Committee is going to be presenting the new Warren H. Manning Award for Landscaping and Garden Design this July, and there's a possibility of as many as three awards, and they're working toward that. Christian Bunton will be advertising to encourage nominations of different gardens and so forth around, and the criteria are going to include such things as plant biodiversity and water management. And in light of this award and so forth, the committee is working to update the village planting guide to transition to native species, and will be providing copies of the new guide when it's ready to realtors to be able to hand out to new homeowners. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Patrick?
Yes, thank you. Lydia asked me to give a brief report on the bicycle and pedestrian meeting that took place literally yesterday, and they had an interesting discussion about pedestrian and bicycle safety awareness and education, and I think they're going to establish a bit of a subcommittee in their group, and they're going to come up with some recommendations along those lines, reaching out to the local bike clubs, and I don't know, I see Kristen. Kristen, they're going to be reaching out to you regarding some things that the village can work with the committee on, and so it was a positive meeting, and they keep looking forward to the sand and clay path extension efforts, which I know are underway, so I'll pass that on to everybody. In the way of two announcements, a reminder that Live at 5 is on Friday at the Arboretum, for those of you who are in the area this week, and more importantly, to some of us, the Sandhills Dog Fair is taking place Saturday. It starts, for those of you with dogs, like myself, it starts at 9:00 at the Tufts Park, but it will work its way to the Arboretum where the celebration and activity will take place, so thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Pat. We'll move on then to item number three, which is a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have meeting minutes under the consent agenda. Does any council member have a question about the minutes or wish to have further discussion of anything in the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda, item number three?
I'll move to approve all the items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by Councilmember Hogeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move then into item number four, which is a discussion and consideration of ordinance 2308. We'll have a presentation by our Director of Planning, Alex Cameron. Before that, however, I want to point out that in the hearings and discussions about this ordinance over the past few months, it was pointed out that I am a member of the Country Club of North Carolina, and I am. However, under state law, I am an elected official, and I'm required to vote unless there's a conflict deemed with any issue coming before the council. I've discussed this with the village manager and also the village attorney. The village attorney finds I do not have any conflict, and therefore, under my elected responsibility, I should vote on this issue if we come to a vote tonight. Having said that, I will take commentary now from Alex Cameron, our Director of Planning. Alex, please go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, can you hear me okay? Okay, all right, so this agenda item to discuss and consider ordinance 2308 is a follow-up to the public hearing agenda item on the last council meeting for the same, for the proposed text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. These amendments would essentially have a few steps. One is to add some definitions to Chapter 10 of the PDO, one of which would be a new defined land use, the neighborhood lodging accommodation. These amendments would further then seat that new land use within our table, 8.51A, Table of Permitted and Special Uses and Special Requirements, and then create a special requirement 10 that would replace existing SR10 and would establish some framework and provisions in which if someone were to establish a neighborhood lodging accommodation, what documentation must be supplied to staff. Since that hearing, again, that was the March 28 regular meeting of the council, there have been some revisions to the amendments that staff have placed in. They have been highlighted. We'll go through those on the document there that's in front of everyone and was included in the agenda packet. Starts with, under neighborhood lodging accommodation definition, that it states that the use of a neighborhood lodging accommodation is permitted or not prohibited through the declaration or other governing documents within that planned community neighborhood, and of course, that it's managed by a master association. The other revision would be in special requirement 10, same language under subsection C, that someone that would be proposing to establish or get a permitted neighborhood lodging accommodation use, that they submit documentation to the village staff, that such has been authorized or, again, is not prohibited by those declarations. And then we added subsection D, which would require an applicant to submit documentation to village staff that the neighborhood lodging accommodation is authorized and managed by a master's association. We felt these distinctions were important because the peer management was one of the main reasons in the discussions here with village council and Assembly Hall that really made a true distinction between the other similar type short-term rental lodging uses within those single-family neighborhoods. So those are the revisions that have been added since the meeting two weeks ago. The council options, I will get to in just a minute. Also, staff did want to make note, there's been some question, and it's worth stating, what areas or other similar communities we think are in our jurisdiction that if they were to check the boxes, if the declarations were either existing or amended such that they could meet the provisions of this ordinance, but passed a first test, which would be that it's a contiguous landmass of at least 20 acres or 20 units. So I just want to mention a few of those real quick, and I know these have been discussed or were mentioned during the planning zoning board hearing as well, but just to reemphasize. Cotswold, Pinewild, CCNC, Hollycrest, Pinehurst South cottages, Pinehurst Trace, Winston Pines, Walker Station, Royal Oak Townhomes, Laferay Townhomes, Pinehurst Manor, Pine Valley Condos, Lakeview Condos, and the list could continue on and on, but those are just a few of the communities that we are aware of that do have some association and, again, meet that minimum requirement of the land area or the number of units within that residential community.
Alex, could I jump in and provide one more point of clarification? We know that the insertion of that language or not prohibited with regard to the declaration has caught the interest of a couple of people, and I just want to try to clear the air on that by saying this. Maybe I'll back up a little bit. A lot of us are aware that there are elements of our ordinances currently and have been elements of our ordinances in the past that create confusion, right? And we wind up finding ourselves in a situation where we're obligated to interpret something by the law, but to our public, it means something different. The language means something different, right? And we're trying to get ahead of that with this language change, and here's what I'm trying to describe. Declarations don't typically authorize things. They typically restrict things. They restrict uses on property. They put controls on the neighborhood, right? So a declaration that is silent on something permits it, and if we had left the language the way it was, in the future, we would be obligated to interpret it to mean exactly the way we wrote it here. So we're just trying to be upfront and clear and transparent with the public.
Thanks, Jeff. You're right, this does occur quite often in our ordinances, and I'm glad to have this clarification made. Thank you for making that. Alex?
Thank you, Jeff. So the options that council has before them in consideration of this agenda item would be to adopt the proposed amendments as drafted. You can also adopt them with specific revisions to any of the sections that have been, are part of these amendments. You have the option to refer back for further consideration or defer action to another meeting based on the discussion and deliberation amongst yourselves, and you also have the opportunity or the option to reject or not adopt the proposed amendments.
Okay, any other reports on that, Alex? Thank you for your good update. Are there comments from council members on this particular item? Jeff, I'll call on you first if you have any comments, or I can come back to you if you prefer. Jeff Morgan?
I appreciate that, thank you, Mayor. I stated most of my comments on the last meeting, and I stand behind those comments on there. I think it's important to recognize that we did ban the short-term rentals expansion from CCNC, and this grants them back their capability in doing that, and I'm certainly a supporter of returning property rights to them, and I think that's critical that we do that. But as I mentioned before, it does create an inequity, because those folks who are not in association of the size that's required are not able to do this, and so I support giving folks back their property rights, I wish we do it for all folks, but this is a step in the right direction, I think demonstrates that if this council approves this, that the proper management of a short-term rental can be done, and it can be done in our village appropriately. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification that was added to the proposed language, and I also appreciate the addition that was made to SR10, because that makes it, I think, a little more clear that the village will be able to ensure that there will be management through and HOA's association, and that on-the-ground management is really the linchpin that protects surrounding development from this usage and makes it manageable by the people within the association itself. So I appreciate both of those changes.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, I agree with the changes. I had one question. You rattled off the names of 13 communities that would also be covered by this, but you said the list goes on and on, so there are additional communities that would also be able to utilize this ordinance. Is that correct?
If they so choose.
If they so choose, but they meet the 20-acre, 20-unit threshold now.
Passed test one, correct.
Say that again?
They would pass test one.
They passed test one, okay. Yeah, I'm fine with this as it is now. Thank you.
Alex, thank you for your explanations and the development of this. I think that over the past many months, we've heard a lot from the public, we've heard a lot from the council members here, from the planning board, and I appreciate the fact that your department and the village attorney, the village manager and staff have done such a good job of creating what is, I would call it, a fair and statutorily correct ordinance for the village of Pinehurst. So again, thank you for the hard work on that for the department, which has worked very difficult, worked through some difficult situations to bring this to our attention and make it work. Any other comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion on item number four?
Sure.
Could I, just really quickly, I took a peek at the motion template earlier, if there would also be, if a motion were made on this item, that a brief mentioning of consistency with the 2019 comprehensive plan within it.
Complain, yes.
Okay, I will.
Patrick, did you?
I'll fix that.
All right.
Just if I can fit that in here. I'll make a motion. I move to approve ordinance 23-08, Pinehurst Development Ordinance Amendments, creating planned community neighborhoods and neighborhood lodging accommodations in the village of Pinehurst, consistent with the 2019 master plan.
That's a motion by Councilmember Pizzella. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Hogeman. Some of our voices were breaking up, including Jeff Morgan, so I'll just do this by roll call vote. Jane Hogeman, your vote is?
Aye.
Jeff Morgan, your vote is?
Aye.
Pat Pizzella, your vote is?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. The motion carries 4 to 0. We'll move on to item number five on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, John. Doug's got a couple of policy updates for your potential approval, and you'll recognize these, you saw these at your last work session, and as a result of that conversation, Doug has prepared the opportunity for you to approve these if you so desire tonight.
There we go, okay, sorry about that. Okay, yes, so the first policy that we have is the one about the naming of public facilities. As you recall, we added the section at the end about taking away a name if we had, if a council had previously done that, so it outlines how we would do that. We kind of discussed it in detail last time, so I'll just take any questions if council has any. If not, there's a resolution that...
I would just add that we did discuss a potential naming opportunity, and now that if we adopt this tonight, we'll move to consider that at the next meeting. So are there any other questions, though, of Doug, on this policy, which we've had before as for the last couple meetings? All right, there's a motion, please?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2311, Updates to the Public Facility and Naming Policy.
That's a motion by Councilmember Hogeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pizzella. Again, just for good order, I'll do a roll call so we get everybody's voice clear. Jeff, Jeff Morgan, I'll start with you this time.
Aye.
Aye. Patrick?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion carries 4 to 0. Moving on to item number seven, Jeff?
Same idea. This is another policy that we reviewed at a previous work session. This one's even less detailed. All we're doing here is removing some of the repetitive language and referring back to the previous section. So if you recall, this is a streetlight policy that will keep it in line with what our PDO currently says. Are there any questions on this policy?
I had a, just, the syntax, Section 2 reads, "Streetlights in new residential developments must submit and abide by a lighting plan," and maybe that could be reworded just a tad so that it's...
Do you have a suggestion?
When we do, when new development proposals come forward, they have to include a lighting plan. Right. And I think that's what we're referencing in this. Right, but it makes it sound like the streetlights are doing the submission.
Got it.
It's the developer who's doing it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Four, maybe, I don't know, four streetlights in new residential developments.
Developers.
A lighting plan must be submitted with the site plan for review as part of the new subdivision supplemental and abided by. I mean, that's also a little bit lame, but...
Yeah, so we could add the "for" at the beginning, for streetlights in new residential developments, and then add developers must submit and abide by a lighting plan.
That work?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Is the question the word abide, Jane, in your mind, more than...
Abide works.
Okay, or agree, I mean, that could...
Because it's not the streetlights that are doing the lighting.
Yeah.
Right, right, I understand the point, yeah. It's hard for that to happen, so, all right. Doug, do you have those corrections then?
I do, yeah.
The village clerk has those corrections? All right, I think we can add that and just, as amended, and vote on this now, too. Any other questions for Doug on this policy? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve Resolution 23-12, Updates to the Streetlight Policy as amended here.
Motion by Pat Pizzella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I can hear you now, Jeff, okay. That motion carries again, 4 to 0. We'll move on into item number eight, and Jeff Morgan, you're hearing us okay over here? Very good. If you wish to make or second a motion, just put your... If you wish to make or second a motion, just put your thumb up and I'll make sure we get it. Mr. Batten?
I think there's a slight delay. The tag team of Hoagman and Pazella, and Pazella Hoagman seems to be working pretty well right now, so we'll let that go.
Okay. Mr. Batten, good evening.
Good evening. Glad to be here, as always.
Yes, sir, it's good to hear from you tonight, Jeff, sincerely.
So I've got the next item on the agenda, obviously, which is being brought to you at the request of the North County Department of Transportation. It is related to a project they wish to implement on Midland Road. Kelly, do you have that? Do you could pull up that? Thank you, okay. Just have a couple of little quick slides here, just to get us oriented. As I mentioned, the DOT wants to implement a project on Midland Road. This particular project is in the Midland Road Corridor Plan Study that was completed back in 2017, that runs basically from the traffic circle to downtown Southern Pines, essentially. And there are a number of enhancements all along that corridor. This is one of them that they would like to go ahead and implement, and they've requested a resolution of support from the village council for this. To get us oriented in terms of where we are, this is Midland Country Club up here at the top. Down here is Carolina I. You can see the cursor, it's a little small today.
Which is, where's your, oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, I see.
Move it a little slow there, it's a little smaller, it's usually really bigger, because we're back here, okay. And then Ironwood Cafe is on the bottom here, and then over, up in the left side here is Pinehurst Area Realty, if I can get the mouse to work. All right, it's going all over the place, so. Thank you, whoever's doing that back there. All right, Kelly, you're taking, you're running the show now. Go down to the next page if you were, the next picture. Okay, and part of the reason they wanted to implement this is, this is the crash data, this is actually some older data, though, it's 2010 to 2015. But where you see the traffic circle on the far left, and as you start coming in to the yellow and oranges and reds, that's where you get into the Carolina I entrance and this Midland Country Club entrance and Ironwood entrance. That's the first bullseye on the left of the ones that you see there, of the three, is the intersection specifically that is entering into Midland Country Club, and...
What does each red and yellow dot represent?
All they're representing is, it's a heat map, and so it's just showing the severity and frequency of crashes, but it doesn't tell you, like, specifically the quantities. In the middle chart, I guess the second one from the right, in the bottom, which you can't really read because it's a little blurry, that one has the actual quantities as a total, but the heat map shows the distribution of those accidents along the Midland Road.
And that is as of 2015?
That's between 2010 and 2015, because this comes out of the Midland Road Corridor Plan, which again was completed in 2017, so.
Can I ask, can Dr. Morgan see the map? I just want to be sure. Okay.
Can I jump in on that? It occurs to me just now, or it just occurred to me, that I seem to recall that both Pinehurst and Southern Pines had to adopt this plan once it was finalized.
And we had representation, both communities, both cities had representation on the committee that developed the plan as well. We had, myself actually was on it, two council members, and then there were the staff of Southern Pines, are basically our counterparts of Southern Pines, and council representation there, elective representation, was on the committee that ultimately did the whole corridor plan. If you'll go to the next one down for me real quick, what they are intending to do, based on the plan, is, this represents the very western side of that section circle that we looked at at the very beginning, and so right up at the top where that building is, to your right there, Kelly, right, little further over, right there, that's Pinehurst Area Realty. And if you go down from there to, you know, 5 o'clock, the lower right side there, you'll see a little bulbout right there. That is the only addition that would be on the Pinehurst side of this little corridor that we've talked about. And if you'll go to the next slide down, this segment continues. So it picks up on the, you know, the left side of, this is the match line, if you will, from the previous slide. So as we're moving from west to east, the green color in the middle of the median there is showing where they would close off the crossover, that's informal crossover right now, at Midland Country Club and Ironwood, and then they would then enhance the Carolina I intersection by including that little bulbout on the north side of it. And that facilitates U-turns, that's why both of those little bulbouts there. They're going to close off that little crossover and push the traffic down a little further to make a U-turn, which is a safer movement.
So Jeff, this is again a Carolina I. You no longer would be able to cross over to make a left turn going west towards the circle, is that, is that correct, or not, with the bulbout there?
With the bulbout, you would be able to make a U-turn at Carolina I. So if you're heading from west to east, coming from the circle to Carolina I, and you wanted to go back to Midland Country Club, you would make a U-turn at Carolina I and go back to Midland Country Club.
All right, because that's the only way into, that's the only way into the club if these changes are made.
Yeah, and then you flip-flop that for Ironwood. If you're coming from east to west, Southern Pines towards the circle, you would go past this crossover and then make the U-turn there near Pinehurst Area Realty office.
Now, how far up do you go then? You go, you're going past then the entrance to the country club to make your U-turn?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how they're facilitating this closure of this crossover and still maintaining access from an east-west orientation to both those.
And when you, when you use the phrase "closure of a crossover," does that mean there's the planting of trees, there's, what goes on in a closure?
They, I don't know the answer to that specifically. In the Midland Road Corridor Study, it was vegetated, vegetative material, shrubbery, likely not trees, because the Midland Road Corridor already does not meet DOT standard for the tree placements so close to the edge of pavement. So it would be shrubs, I believe, is what's in the actual plan itself.
Yeah, that's what I recall, too, Pat, and so it wouldn't be a guardrail or anything hard surface like that, it's to be vegetation.
It's vegetative.
Yeah, to just prevent the turning from happening, but not the look of the road.
Yeah.
I guess a question...
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask, the two impacted, primarily impacted entities, Carolina I and the entrance to the Midland Country Club there, what had been the input or responses from them about this?
So the DOT intends to have a, still have a public meeting on this. They have not done that portion of it yet for this specific project. However, the Midland Road Corridor Plan had multiple public input meetings along the way, and input was taken and changes were made accordingly at the time that the plan was being developed. But they do have told me that they intend to have a public meeting, reference this specific plan and project right here, so that's still yet to happen.
So is this something that they expect to do next year, or is it something they expect to do the end of this year?
They've got, they've got the funds now, and so I don't know their exact planned starting time, but I would assume it's going to probably be in the fall of the year, is my, but that's my best guess.
So it'd be completed before the open?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And it looks like there are two bumpouts, for lack of a better phrase, one going east, one going west.
That's correct.
And then there is that particular, what do you want to call it, U-turn, hairpin turn?
Yep, the bulbouts are for the, to facilitate the U-turn.
Facilitate, yes.
To make the road wide enough to make that little loop.
Okay, all right.
Look back.
Thank you.
And so again, they're asking for a resolution of support from the village council for this project, so that's... The, I will, the last caveat I will put in, as this project, or this plan, let me rephrase that, this plan as a whole was coming together, one of the things that I think the committee as a whole was sensitive to was projects that would impact the number of trees that had to be removed. This particular project, if they were to try to enhance the crossing at Midland and Ironwood to meet the standards, would require removal of far more trees than this proposal here requires. In other words, this will save trees going this route, as opposed to making a full-fledged crossover, safe crossover at Midland Country Club and Ironwood, putting in an intersection right there, would take out far more trees.
On other sections of Midland Road, are there other crossover places that we're going to have to deal with?
Yes, there are a whole slew of them up and down Midland Road that are informal and formal. When I say formal...
They're in Southern Pines jurisdiction, though, right, I think?
Not all of them.
Yeah.
Not all of them. There are a lot of them in Southern Pines, but there are a lot of that have been created over the years by people's just...
Driving.
Use in between the trees. And so a lot of this was intended and is intended, ultimately this plan is ultimately intended to rid the corridor of a lot of those informal crossovers that have developed over the years that become particularly dangerous.
Since the plan was adopted, have there been crossover closures that have already occurred, or is this the first?
This is the first one that I'm aware of. The only other portion of the corridor plan that was implemented, that I'm aware of at least, was the circle down in Southern Pines at NC 22.
Yeah.
The roundabout there.
Roundabout, that was...
That was in the corridor plan as well.
So this will be the first one?
That I am aware of.
That you're aware of, that's pretty good.
I'm surprised that DOT hasn't started this already, because the questions about it and the whole Midland Road study goes back a few years now.
There's been some pretty serious accidents, I mean, the heat map showed that, if I recall correctly, we actually had a fatality at that crossover several years back.
And Jeff, just as a reminder, for the key area there between, well, where Ironwood Cafe, the I Clinic is and all that, how many, how many crossovers in there might be closed?
There's only one that I'm aware of, that they're showing in the plan that is being closed. Now, I can't say for certain that they won't still, with vegetation...
Right, other areas.
Close up some that have not been utilized, that might, would become utilized with the change, but only the one right now, for sure, that would be closed, but there may be some additional vegetation that may be added in a few other locations that have yet to be used in an informal manner.
So we're being asked to look at this Ironwood I Clinic section. DOT is going to yet have a hearing on the whole, on this and other parts of Midland Road, I think, if I heard you correctly.
Yeah, they're going to have it on this particular project, as a standalone meeting, is my understanding, and as they have funding for other sections of Midland Road, I presume they would probably have a public meeting for each of those, but it did indicate to me that they would, they intend to have a public meeting on this particular crossover. Primarily is going to be the Midland Country Club folks that are obviously going to have the greatest interest here.
Right, and that public hearing is scheduled, or we don't know?
Yeah.
Don't know, okay, so we just need to consider this and give a response tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Jeff Morgan, anything on this?
I know no specific questions, but I'll tell you, I certainly support this, I think it's a great first move. We are now an MPO because of the density of our population in the area, and when you have a big road like Midland, and as much traffic is going up and down that, these informal crossings, I think, are dangerous, and that we need to have a formalized process on it. So I give kudos to DOT on pushing this forward, and I certainly support it, and I look forward to further developments on this to structure how we're going to work on our drive on Midland Road. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff Batten? We have a motion on this then, please, number seven, I believe.
I'll move to approve Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 2313, Supporting Roadway Safety Enhancements on Midland Road.
That's a motion by Councilmember Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Pazella seconds that. Jeff Morgan, thumbs up, thumbs down? Jane?
Aye.
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 Motion carries four to nothing. Thank you very much, Jeff Batten.
Thank you all.
Move on into item number eight, discussion about the Neighborhood Advisory Committee Jeff, go right ahead.
Thank you, John, and of course you all will recognize this as well, this is an update to the NAC and associated policy that we've been, actually been working on for over a year now, as it turns out, trying to get this right. You last saw this two meetings ago during your work session, and you asked that we take this, that current draft, to the NAC and have a conversation with them about that, and then based on the results of that conversation, any resulting updates, then bring it back to you. I think we have a final draft here, of course, you know, you may have other suggestions to improve this, and if so, we certainly will accommodate that. So unfortunately, I was not able to attend the NAC meeting where this was discussed, as I think all three of you know, because you were all there, I think. Kelly was there as well, and immediately after the meeting, I was able to talk to John and Patrick about it and get some insights about concerns that were still out there among members. And then I know Kelly took some good notes regarding the comments that were made and the tone of, kind of the themes of those comments. And so I spent some time with her the day, that next day, trying to understand that dialogue and what impacts would be appropriate to consider in changing this document, and Kelly and I worked on a revision. And then last week, I had the opportunity to meet with John and Patrick again with this most current draft, or actually, subsequent to this most current draft, and based on their observations from the meeting, we worked through a couple of other minor edits to make this a better product of, I think, if my memory serves me, the changes that we made included specifying that our NAC members, once appointed, can choose an alternate member, and clarifying that in the language of the policy. We also altered the language that originally said that alternate members could not or would not present a neighborhood report to say that they wouldn't be expected to, and they say, if they're prepared to do it, they can do it. We also removed the limitation, the specific limitation that was in the previous draft associated with the numbers of times a NAC member could, alternate member could be, could attend. And one of the change we made, like, it was a minor one, but, so, bottom line, this is, after consultation with council members and with Kelly about that conversation, this was the, this is the draft that we've put together, and I'm happy to answer any further questions about it, if, I know you had the opportunity to review this, otherwise, if you'd like to consider it.
Jeff, I think you did highlight a couple of the changes that were made over the past few weeks even, from the earlier NAC meeting and discussions of the council. One of the critical or most common questions that's been coming up in this whole discussion with the NAC has to do with public, not public meetings, but public records and the relationship of members of the NAC to being part of a public body. I think it would be helpful if you could explain that a little further, I know you've done this many times, and...
Yeah.
But it is critical, I think, and very helpful for people to understand.
I don't have the specific statutory references with me here, I apologize for that, maybe I should have anticipated the question. But in consultation with Mike Newman, it is our opinion that the NAC meets the statutory definitional requirements to be considered a public body, and because they're a public body, the NAC members are public officials, and because they're public officials, they are, the meetings are open, are required to comply with open meetings law, and those officials are subject to public records requirements in the state of North Carolina.
And I think that what you've said... And I think that what you've said is, from experiences and, and statutory requirements and legal interpretations of what the relationship is between a village council and really any of its committees and commissions that exists, and the nature of a broad definition of what a public official is, or who gets included in that. And I think what we're trying to do is make, make people aware of that, and it's been in existence really for some time. There's no change about that, but not something that people were generally aware of.
Right. And, and one of the points of contention on this has been the statutory requirement that, to, to meet these definitional requirements, the, the members need to be appointed, and relying on school of government interpretation of what that means, in Coast Canada's blogs, we came to the conclusion that a vote of appointment is not required. What, what is required is that the, the council as a whole acknowledges the, the presence and, and establishment of the body, and acknowledges the identified membership of it. And once they've done that, they have by default, you by default have appointed those members to the body.
I think the other thing I'd like to mention here about this policy we developed is that one of the central ideas here has been that there are many neighborhoods throughout the Village of Pinehurst that are not actually a part of this body at this point in time, because we haven't had representation of them, there was not necessarily an HOA or some other organizational unit going back over the years. And one of the things we're trying to achieve here is to increase the coverage, so that as many of our neighborhoods and therefore residents as possible can be part of that Neighborhood Advisory Committee work. And that's one of the other important things here. Are there other questions for Jeff about the policy as we've been developing it? Jane, do you have a question?
No, no, I don't. I think that, it sounds as though what we're, what we're trying to do here is sort of twofold. One is to better describe what the state of affairs that already exists, not to change the state of affairs that had existed. And the other thing is that we are trying to be more inclusive of our neighborhoods, and some of those are going to need, I think, probably more assistance with bringing representation than others that have been participating for a long time. And so, it may look as though, when we write the sections that are meant to provide assistance for new, new, newly participating neighborhoods, it sort of looks like we're telling the old neighborhoods what to do, but I don't really think that's the case. I think probably the practical effect of this is going to be pretty negligible. But it's good that we have organized our own thoughts and put them on paper, so that we know what the framework really is, and we can let people who come on board over time to participate also understand better what the framework is. I think, I think that's all helpful.
Thank, thank you for those comments, and I agree with those. Although, we are hopeful that this will make some significant improvements along the lines of, I think both you, you and John have commented on how we're trying to expand the reach across the village, and make sure that more people in the villages are represented by, by somebody that they, they can identify as being associated with their neighborhood. And then, providing specific village support to creating better distribution lists, so that we can connect with, we through our NAC members can connect with more residents in the Village of Pinehurst, and vice versa, you know, allowing them to connect with us as well.
Jeff Morgan, any questions on this?
Yes, Jeff, are there any other committees that are associated with the, the Village of Pinehurst, based in, in ones that we have village resources going to that do not have a policy on how we're working with them?
Jeff, I don't recall whether or not we have a policy for the Beautification Committee. We, we may have some further work to do.
Okay, because I was under the understanding that we actually did have a policy for the Beautification Committee on that in my discussion with Kelly previously.
Okay.
And, and so, so I just wanted to put it out there. If, if, if I'm incorrect on that, I'd certainly like to be corrected. My, my point on this-
I think we do.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting necessarily that we don't, I just, I couldn't recall off the top of my head if we do.
Fair enough, I, I appreciate that. The way I look on this is that if we're expending village resources on a committee and having it function with our, with our system, that makes it a, a village committee, and we need a, we need a policy on, on how we're addressing that. It, it's part of appropriate governance and, and appropriate answering to, to our citizenry, to our taxpayers that are on there. And so, I do support a, having a policy here. I know that frustrates some people, there is change involved, and whenever there's change, there, there are challenges with that, but I, I think it's our responsibility to ensure that there's proper governance on any committee that we are expending resources on, so I certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Pat?
Yes, I think we've come a long way from where we were a year ago in, in making improvements to putting in place a policy, and I'm going to be voting for this, but I want to express some thoughts about what I accept as the legal opinion as to whether or not the people appointed to this are public officials. I realize that the, the legal interpretation we have is, is one that that's the way the statute reads. I did not realize that until over a year ago, and I don't think anybody in the NAC realized that, and I think most of the members on our other advisory boards did not realize that. So, now, everybody realizes that. But I, my thoughts are really aimed more at, at our legislature. I, I believe what we're, what's going to happen here is we're sort of formalizing the informal. The nature of this organization has been very informal. It's now going to become much more formal. And I think that what worries me is that this idea of being subject to the Public Records Act will have a chilling effect on some residents who are going to say, "I don't know if, I don't want to sign up for that, because, I don't know, that could cause me some problems somewhere." That something I, messages or comments I exchange with some of my neighbors, all of a sudden, somebody can have access to them if they happen to deal with, you know, some village-type business. So, my disappointment in this is really about the statute. I, I really believe we are a community of volunteers. By the nature, we here sitting on the council are part-time members of, of a village council. And although it often feels like more than part-time, but putting that aside, there are, we function a lot with volunteers, and anything we do that chills that a little, you just don't know who decides to say no about getting involved, because they've got to do X, Y, and Z, rather than just show up in an informal fashion and discuss things as a member of a Neighborhood Advisory Committee. So, I would, when we get to the point of discussing about legislation and all that, I, I would really hope our state legislature would look at a way to be sure that we, we don't have this chilling effect on potential volunteers that want to get involved in their communities, but we, here in Pinehurst or anywhere across the state of North Carolina, because I, I know it from just living here, that's sort of the, the backbone of a lot of the way, the machinery of our, of our government functions. Those of us, even though we're part-time, those of us as village council members and/or professional staff that are salaried employees who receive a remuneration for their work, I view them much differently than, and, and they should be subject to Public Records Act, but I view them much differently than someone who is really a, a full-time volunteer with, with no, no attachment, so to speak. So, I, I'm going to be voting for this. My concern really isn't with this as it is, as the, the statutory constraints we have on how we can treat volunteers. Thank you.
So, Pat, your concern is really at the state level?
Yeah. My concern's with the statute, that, that-
It's the law, and we have to follow it.
Yeah, I, I'm, obviously, I'm deferring, we have a fine village council who can read the law and give us sound advice, and so, I, I believe in following the law, but I just, I, I wish, I, I wish there was another way to treat that, because I think our volunteers would be, just feel much better.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from council members for Jeff Sanborn on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion here? At motion number eight?
Yeah, I'll move to approve Resolution 2314, Neighborhood Advisory Committee Policy for the Village of Pinehurst.
That's a motion by Councilmember Hoagman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Pazella. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Jeff, I think I heard you as a yes, correct? Thank you.
Correct.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Jeff Sanborn. Move on to item number nine, is there any other business from a council member for discussion tonight? Seeing none, we have comments from attendees. Is there a list, please? While the list is being brought forward, there are no names on the list, if there were, I would just say that we try to keep our comments to about three minutes. Comments are addressed to the whole of the council, not to individual staff or council members, and we always try to be courteous. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak tonight that may not have signed up? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session?
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session.
That's a motion by Jane Hoagman. Pat, do you want to second that?
Second.
Second by Pat Pazella. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Jeff. That motion carries. We'll move, if it's all right with the council, I think we'll move directly into the work session, or would you like a five, five-minute break or so?
I'd-
Everybody okay?
Yeah, I'd prefer a five-minute break, if it's possible.
Let's take a five-minute break, we'll come back at, at 5:40. Give you a six-minute break. Thank you. I'm very-